Our Father, who art in heaven, so help us, Hallowed be thy name. Let him come, Hallowed he is. Oh, my goodness, we have to have. Give us this sharing our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses. And we forgive those who trespass against us. We just have to turn them out. That's the worst thing. Our Lord. I pledge allegiance to the Lord, to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands on one nation, under the God, indivisible, in whose name we pray.
I, who is on Zoom tonight and also listening on KGIW, usually the Zoomer in person, the hell of a sound world, and any other media and any other guests, welcome you to like. Call me.
Davis.
Here.
St. Columbia.
Here.
Crockett. Franklin.
Here.
Gethry. Forward.
Here.
I have four present, two absent.
We've got time to do business. So before we start on the first issue, what was deferred at the last meeting, obviously in Washington DC, working on behalf of the city, and it was, I do have a good report to give. I was there on behalf of the Mississippi Cities Rivers and Towns Initiative, met with congressional delegation about our many needs here as a county committee. And specifically Senator Bozeman is very gracious and has been very gracious to us. At the time we asked, it was a very good meeting. So I'm sorry I missed the meeting, but I was called up to DC to, at kind of last minute, and it was paid for by the Pacific River Cities and Towns Initiative. So just want to make a quick report on that. But one of the items that was delayed or deferred until this meeting was the issue of the contract for demolition of some of the blighted properties of housing authority and HUD. So one of the questions I think was raised, or two questions. One was the actual properties themselves. And then a question of the square footage cost. And I believe Mr. Jones is here, or he'll be here in a minute. Couple of opportunities to meet with the housing authorities. We didn't get a chance to meet, so I'm sorry. We have since met and talked over, basically to give you some idea of how this works. The US Housing and Urban Development allows cities and municipalities to do the work, provided that we are under the national square footage rate. And that is because, for obvious reasons, we have certain competitiveness that private vendors don't have. For example, we own the landfill. Our employees that do the work are hired, already paid. Then there are other economies of scale that we enjoy. So when we started talking about square footage rights, the first thing I did was call different vendors, call HUD to get the national rate, which is about $8 a square foot. Our rates are lower. Anyway, just private rates are lower. The national rates, the same way our rates are lower than the national rates on a lot of things, because our cost of living or cost of doing business is lower. Because we have, we own the landfill. The federal and state landfill fees are the only fees that we have to pay. Because our employees are already being paid, with the exception of leasing a truck or two, we're able to do this at a much more competitive rate. $5 is the rate that was discussed and approved for brick buildings. Once Mr. Jones has walked in now, and I had to go, had to go over that along with folks representing HUD. And Mr. Jones is here, if you want to ask him questions. He's, you want to go ahead? Mr. Jones is here for those watching. It's in favor of the contract and the program. It's a great opportunity for the city of Howland, West Howland, to eliminate the blight that so many people are fighting, so many of you are running about. It's a great opportunity for us to make income. You have to help us build our own new construction to remove light, even when it's not headway. This is a section of town that is seen by all the people that come to our town, for whatever reason, whether it's economic development, jobs, or just decide whether they want to move and live here to work for something. That's the very much property specifically by a substantial church on Columbia. It's across Dollar General in South Columbia. And there are big boxes and one larger unit that's burned out. Which is Philip Street, Arkansas Street area. So it'll improve the look of our town, even if this is all we ever do. But they have plans to come back with single-family housing and other things, which they'll produce for you all in the future. But in the meantime, most of these properties are already out of compliance with local code, and they're willing to pay us a competitive rate to tear them down. Mr. Jones, if you want to speak to this. Mr. Valley, he's here. But I wasn't here to answer questions, so I'm going to make sure we bring that up since we deferred it to, for two, yes ma'am.
Do we have the manpower to take the structure down?
Do we have manpower, yes ma'am.
Is this, is this additional manpower or additional employees? Or is this something that the people that work for the city?
Well, it's my hope, but this is the first phase. Howland is listed in the program, that's what I call it. And that is one of the things that makes it affordable, because we are. They're trying to get West Howland added. Because of the exemption in HUD, which allows cities and municipalities to do this, it's a win for everybody, it's a win for the city, it's a win for HUD. But the short answer is, is absolutely. Tearing down is not really as big an issue of cleanup. And I want Mr. Jones to say that if we will have to rent trucks, we don't have the three accident dump trucks that we need. And that was my concern. Yes. It will be far short of the
Yes.
240,000 that we'll need. Also, the environmental requirements are all on HUD. Now, I don't want to say that this demolition process that requires remediation, it will not be on the city bill. I want to make sure I answer Mr. Davis.
Since you are going to do it or plan to do it, about how long do you think this will take?
I mean, I think we got what, 90 days on this project?
90 days.
90 days, yeah, I think we can meet that requirement.
Meet that requirement?
Yes, sir. All the issue we would have, we got that lined up. Now, it's going to be with the drivers coming in hauling debris from the site.
Let me, let me make sure Mr. Davis has, and then any follow-ups, sir.
Company, or this, these are your jobs?
No, it's not be my driver. We will have to actually pay them per day, you know, to haul the debris off from the site. And we tell you some of our manpower, you know, I got a guy to do the tearing down, the demo search part of it.
And I just want to clarify on the 90-day issue. What they showed me in the spring is there's no 90-day mandatory requirement. Primarily, what they're looking at is you got about 30 days for HUD approval once this is approved, okay?
He explained that last week, and he said, but he wanted it done as soon as possible. They wanted it done as soon as possible.
90 days is the goal, is absolutely the goal. And one reason for that is because that's the dry time of the year. And the 90 days following the 30 days. After that, you start getting into wet weather again, and you start dragging things out and slowing everything down, and that makes things more expensive. At this point, you're talking about units that are so close that we don't even have to trailer our track hoe. We can move the track hoes and mini excavator from one site to the other because they're so close together. That makes it quicker. Again, demolition itself is not really the biggest issue. It's more the cleanup. So, I don't know if that answered your question.
If I may, I think for clarity, one thing they did emphasize in the actual man is they don't want this to drag out for six months.
Right, no, I think 90 days is definitely the goal. That's right. Mr. Davis, something else? Sorry, Mr. Franklin, Mr. Franklin has his hand up.
Thank you. When we was here, the last meeting, Mr. Jones, you buy us all the land here, so there won't be any tipping. We won't have to pay the tip fees, right? So if somebody else got this, they have to pay us tip fees, right? Which would make us, we would make more money with somebody else doing this job than we would, right?
I mean, I looked at it like that during the last meeting, but now, since I met with the mayor, Mr. Andre, I got a better understanding of that. So we would bring, we would get that, we would get, we would go and still be making money.
So was it?
But it would give us a little bit more.
If somebody did it?
No, it would give us a little bit more if I, we were going to hit on HUD for three drivers, and I mean, it was our manpower, just one man with manpower from the landfill. If we back and forth, we got more manpower out the country to ship. Then we would make a little bit more.
So, okay.
And I'll say it to y'all later.
Okay, so that would be fair to say that the apartment, the apartments over here, that we had to hire somebody, that we didn't have the manpower, and we still in litigation about over here, that we couldn't afford to tear that up. But all of a sudden, now we can tear that up. The, the, the mayor's letters that you said, how the people would clean up over there that we in litigation with, to tap these apartments over here behind, in front of the library, on Popple Street, those apartments, we had to pay, that we're in litigation about there, that the guy hadn't been paid, that authorized, that was said that you authorized it. But that's the stuff that was said, we could tear all these houses down there, and that's going to put you in spending more of your manpower, right?
I wouldn't move one of my men, that's the driver for this.
So you're going to have to hire outside company, you're going to have to be licensed, bonded, have all the insurance before you hire, so you got to put it.
I think the city, the gentleman did state it to me, saying that we can, in my opinion.
We can, we can, but they, they still have to have their insurance system, because if they tear down, the city will be liable for it. So they will have to have their own insurance.
Yeah, that's true. You know, they're probably going to be, they'll be watching the bank.
Yes, sir. So at the end of the day, Mr. Jones, the $200,000 that we, that we see on this paper, you hire people and we trust and stuff, you're just pleasing the money. So what is the, what is the real dollar figure that the city will end up with? Is this a good thing to do for the city? Because, and Mr. Jones, you're dealing with $50,000. The, the, his, not you, Mr. Jones, but if your department is on a $50,000, that's not good for you, because you lost almost $200,000. Because you had to pay, you're the guy who's going to be on the city's payroll. These other people who aren't spending, you got, you got to pay them. So only you, only you is getting it, the landfill.
We're going to have, we're going to pay the expense on our own job. That's true enough to be, because like I said, debris coming to our land.
Right.
We're going to probably see, if we're even charged, we probably see half of that money.
Right.
You know, I mean, my concern is, we paying the job. And that shit will take too much out of it. The price on the load, you know, which we have all together, if we got a contract.
What?
We can put some numbers together on there.
So what if, what if you run into a problem? Because, you know, the, the, so Mr. Jones has expenses in it. What if you run into a problem?
I know how hard that fall.
Okay. So I mean, so, so you saying, so how much do you think, when we could hold $200,000, what, what is your estimation of the real clip?
I would say, probably, we're going to probably spend that cost, call about $800,000, $900,000 with the home.
Okay. So, so that's, so that's not, if you don't.
I would try to get it down to as I can.
But with, with inflation if they grow up, the real is going to grow every day.
It's a growing.
Right, so, so you.
Based on, you know, looking at it to match.
Right. So I, 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 I know, I know, the public works, I, I'm not going to jump on you, but for me seeing it, I, I don't, it's pushing it kind of tight. The person got it tight for you, because it's where you own a public works, so your hands are everything, right?
Yes, sir.
So I, I, an extra project kind of take you away from what you normally do, right?
Well, it would be taken, like I say, it would take, one of my men drive, and I got another guy to see it at its, at the position, you know, so not, not, that guy will actually be driving the extra.
Yes, sir. But you, but you still got to go out, they still supervise him, because.
I got a gentleman down there.
Right.
But I'm standing there.
But I'm just trying to paint the picture, that, and I said, I don't want the work. I don't, I don't, I don't think that, that, that would be, I think would be. You're all going back and forth, and I know, the city attorney, they don't have difficulty. The public probably have difficulty. Could you tell us, Mr. Jones on the higher manufacturing, what this is going to cost? So we'll have an understanding of what this is going to cost.
This is a product that I'd say, with the food and all of the job, we're going to have to pay for all of it. We'll be out about $100,000, $100,000.
You say $100,000?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Franklin, he was next. And then, Mr.. Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Franklin.
Okay, so you're saying that you feel that cost to the city through this project will be around $100,000? And you feel as management, you can handle all this without any burden or any problems whatsoever? You feel that with the people you have, they're going to take one over one, you talking about?
Yes, sir.
You research this very carefully and very closely?
Yes, sir.
You discuss this with the mayor?
Yes, sir.
You, you made a responsibility you had in doing this. I can see where we make around $140,000, $140,000 profit. Am I right about that?
Yes, sir.
You feel strongly?
Yes, sir.
We can do that kind, that's good business. I've been in business a long time, and I know what it takes to make money. When you can take $100,000 and make $130,000 out of it, that is smart business. That is smart business. And I, I think in a project like that, to make that kind of money and only invest $100,000, of course, that's money that they're going to give us anyway. We can make $143,000 off of it. I see no problem whatsoever with that project. And I commend you for your research into this, Mr. Jones, and trying to help the city make some money. I realize that no matter what happens, they're going to have to dump it in our landfill. We own the landfill, so that's an advantage to us anyway. Mayor Ray will then lose any money, all of them. None whatsoever. They're going to give us $243,380 at a cost of, you're estimating around $100,000. We make about $143,000. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, 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 I like this idea.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. I, I just add to that, that we have, as Mr. Jones agreed, we have a lot of blight in our city. This is a rare opportunity for us to actually get paid an adequate, not only an adequate amount, even if we broke even, this would be worth it, because we would be improving our city. But we actually make a profit off it, so people are actually paying us to remove the blight. I wish we could say that was going to happen all the time. Most of the time, we break even if we're lucky. If somebody pays us to, but we, we err on the side of trying to help with blight, because blight is such a problem. And I don't think, I think most members of the council know that it's a much more complicated issue than the average person really understands. And I'll be the first to admit that myself. It is a lot more complicated. But most of the time, we're out money if we do this. And we're dealing with absentee landlords and people with estate issues and legal issues. It basically means if we want to tear it down, we're going to do it at a loss. Or if not at a loss, we break even. This is a case where we actually make a profit, and that profit can be rolled back into the Public Works Department to help us with other blight that's not related to HUD. So, you know, it is something that is a, is a unique opportunity for our city to improve it, to make it look better, and to make money doing, doing that. So I think those are good points. Ms. Ford was next, but I think she deferred anybody, anybody who hasn't asked any questions. Mr. Franklin.
This is, I would like, this is, I told you, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad that you are so excited about tearing down property, that we need to take care of our own property and fix the blight, and our own, the city's property, of you where you ride by. It's better than anything. So I wish that you take the same energy to have people, that we already paid for the house to be torn down. We have a guy who's been with us for the past five years, because he's paying the money. House has not been torn down. We go gave, he paid $1,000 or $5,000, we already paid, we paid for it. We should have the same energy. And I think this, you said it's a win, Mr. Jones, I really hope it's a win. I, you still before us, two weeks ago today, said that it would be hard to see.
Yeah.
And I'm glad you have changed your heart. I'm glad that the city can make money. But also, I wish that we could, they would take, take care, just like this is $200,000, $5,000, a dollar, whatever comes to make the city better. Like, I know you try, so.
I've asked for a dump truck in the past now. And the city can make money, and we get the thing we need, like, like a double action dump truck, we can, we can make some money.
Are you, you know, the last thing we should have built? We got, we got ready to get to a dump truck. And somebody said we went by a dump truck, middle, we. This, this body had got the, got the dump truck, because Mr. Franklin said it was a good idea that we could haul our own stuff, and take it to the landfill. And somebody said, we didn't have the money, we went by it, and we didn't. And it fell off the wagon. And I'm not the head of the table, so I didn't do that. This body has approved whatever. We've got an expansion that was not approved by this body, that's sitting out on the city's lot.
If I, I've been robbing, young day, everything I have. But we do need a double access dump truck for the city.
Yes, sir.
And I ain't scared of no work. If I got what I need to have, I, I'll do my job.
I know you will. I know you will, and I'm glad that the public works better. But I, I certainly wish that we could get, you know, eventually, and I think we.
I think Mr. Travis was next. I wasn't finished, but I've been crying, then, Mr. Valley.
No, I, I appreciate Mr. Travis, there to go.
I, I, I think we probably need to clarify for people who are listening, because I'm, I'm hearing mixing of issues and sliding of issues. And we got to be clear, this is not some property that we stood up and said, we're going to go and tear down. They're tearing down their own property. They offered to pay us to tear down their own property.
That's right.
So there's no such thing as break even. Break even is we stay out of it, we don't tear down, because they're going to tear it down no matter what happens. They're going to pay either us or somebody else to tear it down. The issue that we have to resolve is, is it going to be cost beneficial for us to tear it down? Or are we going to lose money? If we're going to lose money, let them tear it down on their own dime and handle all the detail. So that's the issue we have to decide. So it's not like we decided, let's go tear down some property, and this is the way we can make some money. They're going to tear it down, they just offer it to us. And so what I'm hearing is, is there's some cost. I don't know if everybody's putting down the cost to, 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 you know, I, I would caution you, Mr. Jones, Mr. St. Columbia asks you to go allow you a lot of questions. And I would ask those same questions, because I would rely on what's being told to me if it's told. We don't have any numbers that are being presented to us other than what's going to be generated in terms of revenue from the project, but not in terms of what we have to pay to get it done. And so I'm not an expert on this, and by any stretch of the imagination, I don't, this is not my, my background, not my field. So everybody here, I think, is relying on what's told to them in order to make a deal. And so, Mr. St. Columbia is, is, they ask like leading questions, it's going to be this, and you've done this, and you've done that, and you're, and then if it goes wrong, who's going to say, yeah, you told me we had it all.
That's right. I got to on this all.
Mr. Bill, I love Mr. Valley, we miss him, Mr. Franklin.
Very, very briefly, last, and the mayor's, I told you, I thought the contract was fine for us to wording and et cetera, your dollars, it was $5 per square foot, and that the tipping fee were included in that. And here, Mr. Jones, there's two other things I want to bring to your attention, the base payment is in the budget. And the reason is, the mayor has the authority to hire part-time people, but they, they can be hired for the maximum of 28 hours for those part-time people. In addition, they must be budgeted. And what I wrote while I asked Mr. Turner was about the budget. And that's why I was asking you, Mr. Jones, a specific question. If you were to hire part-time people, how many you go hire, what rate? So that when they approve the contract, they'd also have to appropriate whatever monies that you're asking, so that we can have this tied neatly in a boat, and we won't have to have any ancillary issues.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I, I, as a businessman, I see an opportunity here for this community to make some money. And I, to me, I wish they'd offer it to me. I personally, as a businessman, I, I can see, and I'm, I'm depending on your expertise in knowing and handling labor and managing people. And I know you've done it a long time, that's why I specifically asked that question.
Yes, sir.
To only cost us, you said first around 90, then you said maybe $100,000 most.
Yes, totally, sir.
And I see a profit of $143,000 in just a short period. And this is, it's going to be done anyway.
Yes.
Well, they do it, or we do it. They're offering us an opportunity. It's an opportunity for this community. And then when we get that done, with that $143,000 profit that we got, we know we got it now. So now we can start tearing down all these other houses. We got the equipment, we got the manpower, the know-how, and the management in you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
To get the rest of these houses down. And that's what we need to do in this community, is get rid of these ugly-looking houses that are sitting there that are half-burned up all over town. But we'll have $143,000 to do it with. And that's what I'm driving after.
And hopefully, we'll have a lot.
Mr. Paul, Mr. Barry.
If I may.
I've had discussions with others relating to this. It's my understanding that the going rate in the state of Arkansas to do this type of work is $3.75 per square foot.
$3.75.
And so they are saying $5. And so they're paying a premium. And that's why it was a, it was intent of the Howland Authority for it to be a win for the city. It's why they were trying to do it, if the city could do it. But they still going to pay the $5. But on these type of contracts, where contracts are saying the typical rate is $3.75, that's being paid at $5.
And Mr. Val is absolutely right. That's basically the wholesale rate. The $8 is the national retail average rate. I spoke with a lot of our vendors, and there's one actually here, here in the audience, but about, you know, what would, what would work if they were doing it? And they can make money at $5 per square foot, and they don't have the economies of scale. One of the things I would stress is that a lot of the employees who will be doing this are going to be paid anyway. So the question is not cost, the question is additional cost, or, you know, the cost of diverting them away from some other activity. And I think when you look at that, the cost could be even lower than $100,000. The other, the other cost is going to be the dump truck. And that's the bigger issue. And I think that we can lease those. And as, and again, we have somebody in the audience who, who rents those. But, but includes his drivers, I believe. So I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I just happened to see you out there. But even with those costs considered, the city makes, makes money off of this, which can then be turned back into the Public Works Department to work on other blight that we don't make money off of. And we usually either lose or break even at best, and.
That's the point I was trying to make on that, that we could have the equipment. When we got through tearing all this down, doing it, and they're paying us to do it, we then would still have the equipment going, and we can go, just continue on tearing down the rest of these houses. Is that right, Mr. Jones?
We would have to pay more. Well, I mean, if it's something we're doing at project that we're doing. I mean, I can't, I can't go with them, go tear down like a top downhill on Arkansas or West Southern that ain't, that included into the project we're doing. I couldn't get them to do that.
And, and the other issue is, is while we're doing that, we can double-check our water utility lines, or ditches, or drainage, and some of the other work gets done in those, on those particular areas, because they're coming back with development. And so we can go ahead and knock those things out. So we have to do those things anyway.
Yeah.
This creates economies of scale that allows us to do those things while we're doing those things and be paid for it. So it's a very unique opportunity for the city.
You said a moment ago that the state of Arkansas, the average was around $3.75, is that right?
That's not a set of people. Sir, that's not a set of people, people with the housing authority.
Uh huh.
And some contractors, that's a typically they could pay.
But they're gonna give us five dollars.
Yes.
A foot, square foot.
And that's for brick, which is most.
I think it's a win-win proposition. It's an opportunity for this community to make some money, and we about time we make some money.
Miss Crockett.
Thank you, sir.
So is this the area where we pay somebody to take dirt too? In Sacred Heart, that's about to be torn down. Where we had, where we, where the city paid somebody to deliver dirt to Sacred Heart. This is not one of those buildings. And I don't know, why was we paying people to deliver dirt all the day we got to live for you?
It was about a block away.
It was free. Well, why you gotta be here for, why somebody got paid for it?
For the, for the delivery. Delivery was, was cheaper because it was so close. And they also not deliver it, but also spread it and plant it. That's not related to this issue.
Further discussion, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
When, when the man came last week, uh we told him, he only mentioned that they were tearing down houses in Sacred Heart. And Joe Brady Drive.
Now, it's gonna be sixteen projects.
Yeah, but I said, okay, but I'm saying, I, now I see. But I see Ohio Street, uh Warner Street. Franklin Street, I'm just talking to the law. When, when he came, when the mayor from the house, they only mentioned uh. A promise in Sacred Heart and and Joe Brady Drive.
If I could clarify, the list didn't change. I think you all maybe asked for a list. Did you do that?
No, we did not. He told us that they wanted to tear down houses and joke, because I don't like that me. Joe Brady Drive and Sacred Heart. That's what he said, right? Franklin and all. No, you weren't here, so you can't say what he said. But uh the man only said something about Joe Brady Drive and Sacred Heart, because I don't need him tearing down number thirty-one Long Street. I might have to go home.
But those are the bigger projects, and Joe Brady and and those areas, the the bigger complex, apartment complexes. Vacant and burned out currently, and and in violation of code currently. So several apartments are burned up, and and they're also stripped out. They've had copper wires stripped out. I've toured them, and they're not habitable without a a huge investment, and so what? They've decided is it's cheaper to rebuild single-family housing in those spaces. Uh than it would be to rehab the existing projects.
Heart area that they're gonna tear down, have it, have, have the city decided, answer since they're gonna tear it down? We have a park right there. That, you know, when they had the hollow fist, it looked real bad. I'm glad they go tear it down, but had, since they're gonna do that. Have the city asked them, will they try to revitalize their parking in the area? To pu- to pull the value up in the area, so it's children, the area, they have a park right by the apartments. Have you, when they started redeveloping the area, have you all decided, hey, listen, we should try to.
They have not presented their planned unit development plans to the planning commission at this time. They're still developing those with their architects and engineers, but they're gonna come back with a plan for the Sacred Heart area, the. The Jonah Drive area, as well as the other areas that are the part of this. Where they go from these type of structures to single-family type structures and duplexes. They have not presented this, so I don't know at this time. I have not asked them about the the park that you're talking about, Sacred Heart Park.
Just like behind Miller, before they, uh Denise Drive here, before they started developing, I went back to the exit, could they put a park back there? There is a park back there, before they start rehabbing those apartments, I think it gives those children over there a safer place to be. So that when they start rehabbing, in West Hill, the behind these drive, there is a park back there. And I think that since we own, since they have the hollow fist of it, it will be good, and we can try to ask them, just like I asked about these other. Uh bills they have, the city would be interested in getting. So I think it's just something to put out there, to make sure that we can have something when there is development, that they could use some funds to develop. That park over there, so those people.
Somebody say something about, um.
No, I meant to do break it. Thank you.
Okay, but I just, I was trying to get a clear, because when I hear John, John.
As it next to the contract, the contract, the, you're gonna prove the contract with the five dollars per square foot. Uh as part of proving the contract, you have to come back with Jones, stating that he would. There are two routes that you could take. Jones has taken the route to saying that he would do a uh. He would, he and the mayor would hire part-time people, you all had to appropriate those in the budget. They wouldn't come to the base pay, because you, in the base pay, it already gives the mayor authority to hire part-time people. Up to twenty eight, twenty-eight hours per week per person uh with no benefits. Uh but this would have to be budgeted, and so that's the issue you have. Uh the other route, you all discussed, but I think you all somewhat rejected it, but you didn't vote on it. Whereas the city could take it and and subcontract it, but they would have to be licensed and bonded, et cetera. Uh and uh some contractors feel that they can get it done within three seventy-five to four dollar range. Uh being licensed and bonded and get it done in the next of the month.
Yeah, I don't think it take long to do that, because all's are dry days.
You all wanna go, but the contract had to be voted on, and then you have to look at the the funding mechanism. What what's what's you all gonna do? If you were doing it as a subcontract, you'd have to have competitive bidding waiver, hire contractor. If you're doing it in the city, you would have to appropriate the employees. I don't know which one you all wanna do. The progress employees, you wouldn't even draft anything, you just. I guess the issue about subcontracting is it's over five thousand dollars, and you'd have to have approval. That's why I'm saying, you gotta know now which way you're going. Because time, once you do it, time is of the essence, you need to go straight to the end. If you're gonna be subcontracting to uh any part of this, you need to tell the council now. So the question for you all is whether you all go going to approve it as a body first. If you prove it as a body, how are you going to fund it? Are you gonna fund it through part-time employees, what Mr. Jones said, or fund it through subcontracting? I need to know, just so we can tie this up. That's an administration issue. That's, that's the man, Mr. Jones could tell you that. That's where you need to have.
Well, I mean, of course, that was the first question that was asked when when we were approached about it, and and the answer was. Uh five dollars a square foot is the sweet spot between where the the city makes money. We will have to rent, lease, buy a a uh dump truck. But other than that, most of the salaries are gonna be paid for anyway. Besides that, we're already, I mean, you've already appropriated some demolition funds. This is a way to um recoup that money and make money on top of that, so. I mean, the answer is, there's no, there's no real need to immediately subcontract this entire project. If that changes, I think it would need to come before the council. But at this time, I don't see any need to. Okay, purposes of this contract anyway, and it would have to be, it would have, I mean, I think you could make the stipulation that that's what Mr. Valley's suggesting. If that changes, that we come back for the council.
Is the, is the price of renting or whatever with the hundred thousand dollars, does that improve the doctor? No, we're renting the dump truck. Joe, we're renting the dump truck, not buying. Not, not if you rent it. We just rent it.
When we get through to hire, to to rent tomorrow.
I would say this, Mr. Jones can can bring back to the council those options as far as lease, police purchase, rental. And y'all can make your decision at that. But either any of those options are still uh still made possible by this contract. That we would not otherwise be able to do. And you've already appropriated money for demolition, so this is actually a way to um keep that and make money, so. Just, it's up to you.
For clarity, one thing to say, let's say Columbia and Mr. Jones continue to say one hundred forty-three thousand. If you did it with a contractor who who decided to do four dollars a square foot, uh that would leave forty-eight thousand dollars in profit. Just, that's both sides of discussion, that's how you wanna go forward, but you all need to make some decision uh relating to.
I mean, for that, for that, I mean, forty-eight thousand and and to a contractor?
No, no, no.
If they did it at what?
If they did it at four dollars a square foot, you would still left with a dollar's worth of profit. And that means you get left with forty-eight thousand dollars. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay, well, now with a contract, he still gotta bring it to the landfill, all right? If you gonna pay for the, this is what you're saying to me, like, he paying for the tires to come out there, they pay?
If he was subcontractor, uh in this contract, this contract, the the fees are included in there, the the land, the landfill.
As long as he paying for the time.
No, no, no. The five dollars square foot includes the landfill fees.
So that's what you said.
Here's the thing, if you did a subcontract, I'm talking to the council, and you. These, the fees, the landfill would be charged, uh included in that four dollars square foot, is what I'm saying. Just like the contract is five dollars per square foot, including the fees. I was just giving the scenario, because you all are discussing it, and you wanted to have a healthy discussion about what you're looking at. So the hundred and forty-three thousand is what you're saying, is basically on those numbers, you'll be doing. At two thousand something a square foot is what you're basically telling the council. Every square foot. The numbers.
You're putting out, you're saying, we would end up with a profit of about three dollars a square foot.
What I'm doing is looking at the forty thousand square foot, forty thousand dollars square foot, the total is two hundred and forty-three thousand. For every dollar a square foot, what you're saying is gonna be forty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Right.
Right. If you're saying you're profiting a hundred and forty-three thousand, his proposal, but he's saying that he gonna do it for less than three dollars a square foot, is what.
Because we got a good manager that can handle it.
That's what's, what's, what's being said.
But I I I'll talk with him, I'll I'll be chance to talk with him tomorrow.
It's, it's, it's your pleasure. I would, I mean, if you, if you think that you wanna leave that out as an option. In your motion, or in the contract, I guess is a better way to say it. You can make that, you know, option possible, provided they stay under that five hundred, five dollars per foot, or you can set it four hundred and four dollars per foot if you want to. That's, I mean, that's your discretion again, it's up to you.
The, the city is doing it. I'm sorry, let me, let me ask a question. I would just, because you were talking to finance, I wanted you to be informed about the finance you're talking. And I, when I put out the three dollars square foot that the state normally does, and the contractors typically could do it. I was trying to further explain what it was, if it was subcontracted, it would be three dollars seventy-five cent to four dollars square foot. And the profit would be forty-eight thousand. And but Mr. Jones has already told this body, uh that the profit for his numbers and the mayor's numbers would be a profit one hundred forty-three thousand. That what he's saying, so you're doing it below three dollars square foot mathematically, is what I was looking at, that's all I was saying. And you all have to make the decision as to how you're gonna go, but we need to know tonight, because it's two things you have to prove. The contract, which I told you, is fine, and you gotta appropriate the part-time employees. And if there's a rental above five thousand dollars, you need to appropriate that. That's what I was asking Mr. Jones, so you all know that, so we don't have to come back to this issue again.
We're talking about using some of that money that they're gonna give us anyway. Some of that hundred, uh two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, we're gonna be putting it back, that's gonna be our uh investment into the project. But when we get through the bottom line, is what you're gonna have to look at, and I can't see nothing but a profit, I see dollars coming our way. If it's ninety to a hundred and forty-three thousand, we're looking at over a hundred thousand dollar profit, and this community can use that money. In its treasury, and I think we'd be foolish to turn this offer down. As a businessman, I I wish they'd offered it to me, I'd have taken a drop of a hat, because I can see a, an idea of making some money here. If this body don't go with it, I think we'd be foolish to turn this five dollars, an hour, a five dollars a square foot down. When they could all, when they, they can do it anyway, they're gonna clean this place up. We can have an opportunity there to make money, and then to use our equipment afterwards, or whatever we do, to continue on cleaning the rest of this town up. We'll have the muscle and the power and the strength and knowledge and know how to do it with, and that's what this community needs, is to clean itself up.
As a practical matter, there needs to be a funding mechanism first.
Sir?
As a practical matter, there needs to be a funding mechanism first. Would know what, how, which way you're going, and then approve of the contract.
I agree.
And so how many, how much of equipment or or man he's asking for? You can lay it out now, so it could be appropriated and go forward.
Right.
I think this man's achievement trying to interject.
I just have one question. Are we going to be able to draw down money to fund this project? Or do we have to wait until it's over before we get anything from HUD?
I'm, I'm gonna depart to to Mr. Valley.
My, I've, in paragraph B on compensation, it said they would process invoices within two weeks of receipt. So as you tear down the building, you send them a bill, tear down units, send a bill, they sort of process it every two weeks.
And and that begins with tonight. If you approve this, it then goes to HUD for a thirty-day approval. And what they're approving are the funds at five dollars per foot to go to them to pay that. So it does go into a fund upon approval by HUD. What HUD has indicated is a prior approval is granted provided at five dollars per foot. Uh and they do this in part to help build, help the cities build up their own infrastructure. So that there's a reason HUD does it this way, and it's uh that way HUD doesn't have to bid it out. Because otherwise, um i- if we just let them do it, you know, you're looking at a bidding process. They have to conduct, but because it's going through a public entity like the city, at five dollars per foot, which is less than the national. Uh and and state uh retail rate uh for demolition of brick buildings, they don't have to. They can sole source it to us, they have thirty days to approve it, they've indicated prior approval based on everything they've already received. So in other words, first step is you approve it tonight, second step is HUD approves it in thirty days. At that point, Mr. Ramsey, they uh put funds into the housing authority account, and then they pay us as we complete the projects. Invoices, that's my understanding.
Right, and then also, uh they have, is they, when they, like, when we said, when I'm here. It's what they tear down and use, you have to submit a bill to them. The housing board is, they run out of the talent now, so they only pay once a month. So what it is, the housing board could write a check, but somebody has to approve it somewhere else. So every two weeks, they only, they're not paying two weeks anymore, they pay it once a month.
Well, they need to change the contract.
Right, so it puts Ms. Ramsey in a crunch, and she gotta pay our people every two weeks, right?
But we're paying that anyway.
But we're not for the rental there, for the rental of these trucks is the.
See, they're, they're also thirty day pay.
So, but we have, even if, if the rental thirty day pay, pay right. We would have to, we had to submit the bill before she could. We would have to, we had to submit the bill before she cut the check, so we had to spend our money to make that move.
Right, the, the budget is approved when HUD approves it.
Well, man, I'm saying.
The funds, the funds are, are approved as submitted by invoices, and then they, they pay out on a thirty-day basis, then we pay out our vendors and any other vendors on a thirty-day basis. And it, it would be worth it, and it might require another vote of the council, but, uh, even if there were to be a cash issue, uh, i- it would be worth it in this case for the city to, to make arrangements to, to repay itself.
That's understandable, man, but think about this, it would put our city currently, and it kind of, wha- wha- what if this happens, payroll and all this stuff, the bills follow the same time, and she got to pay. See, we have to rely, see, like, once you submit the bill, they, they have to send a change, get paid. So she'll still be waiting, if our payroll and all this comes at the same time, and we don't have the money, we have to pay, that puts us in a financial crunch until we receive their money.
I think if we get, get the vendors, if we have outside vendors, they'll just have to understand that they don't get paid till we get paid.
Right, so, uh, uh, see, then that, then that would not put you in a financial crisis. They have changed their practice, they don't pay vendors anymore every two weeks, they ask us to wait thirty days. So that's why people that grass and stuff, you see, will wait to get paid, because they can't function on thirty days. You gotta wait, you could, uh, you could all went alone, you're, you're a month behind. So, so that, that, that's just about the, I don't want it to be that, and if they change it to every two weeks, get a, our payroll, and, you know, you, you, then you can see how much money we're really making. Cause what it is, like, you're, like, Ms. Jones, we, it's a hundred and something thousand, we, we, we just, we said, the, the clerk and the treasurer spent the money, that puts us in a bind until we get this money, so we, we still have a lot.
I agree with you, and I see your point, but as, as the city clerk just said, I think we can do it on thirty-day payable basis, we have to. We totally asked to, to we payable that, absolutely.
We can do it, let's do it, let's get this town cleaned up, and with the management we've got, and the leadership we have, I think we will, we get it done. I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve this, uh, because that's what we needed, because let me probably, Mrs. Jones, you haven't given, given a number, having a part-time people, what, what they need to do, because you need the financial part first appropriated before we approve the contract.
Three, three, three drivers, part, three drivers, I'm, I'm gonna need three drivers, three trucks.
What's, what's, what's the money?
A hundred thousand dollars, appropriate, just for the whole project. Let's just start a cleanup, yeah, that include, we ain't got a hot no part-time driver, we gonna have your driver, who's gonna be driving their own truck. Yeah, the drivers will be driving the truck.
So, so, so we, so we gonna leave the driver and the truck?
Uh, yes, yes.
Okay.
What we're trying to do is make sure we clear, and you're, and what you're asking for is total a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
That includes three part-time employees.
Yes, sir.
At what amount, total for those three employees?
I got those numbers right, what you, tonight.
And that's inclusive.
Oh, you come out the pay rates or the, oh?
No, no, what I'm trying to figure out for budget purpose, so we have a clear, you, you're trying to rent, uh, dump trucks or some other equipment.
Yes, sir.
We know how much that is, so for the budget.
Okay.
We know how much you, you're, you're doing as relates to the employees, because what I'm trying to do is get you to show, it's not to see this amount for the part-time employees.
Right.
And I see this much for the, uh, the rental of the equipment, so we have appropriation, is, this, this time, did you have anything to add to that?
What, what could I add?
The only thing I would add was that, that the city council considered that we already have, I think we have seventy-five thousand in, uh, appropriations for demolition, I think we've used, uh, five thousand, so I think, uh, we have about seventy thousand that's already in appropriations. Uh, I believe that that seventy thousand can be used for the dump truck rental, because it could be part of demolition, uh, but the, uh, amount for the part-time people, uh, we would probably have to have a more, uh, better estimate of what we wanted for those people, because that's, that, that would be a separate line item.
Yes.
Uh, but.
I can get that to y'all in a minute.
But you can use, you can use a seven, you can use a seven before the, the rental.
Yes.
And so the only thing you would have to appropriate would be the amount for the, uh, part-time people.
Yes, sir.
That, that would be my suggestion.
Yes.
So the price.
These, these jobs got to be full-time, am I correct, because they requiring us to do four dollars a week, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, yes.
Don't you have to pay?
Here's a practical issue we're getting to, the base price says up to twenty-eight hours and no benefits for part-time people. If you're going full-time, even if it's seasonal, you got to provide all the benefits and et cetera, if you go over twenty-eight hours. And so that may affect your number, that's why I was having the question, because you may need, to fix rate the same thing, you may need five people versus three, is what I'm.
Okay.
I, I would also suggest that a lot of trucks would at least come with drivers, so you could just make a hundred thousand dollars not to exceed, as needed, three trucks and the drivers to drive them, uh, on a contractual, subcontractual basis. And then you don't have to worry about some of those issues, uh, with payroll.
Okay.
But that would be, have to be approved, you know, along with this.
Okay.
I mean, that, that would be in the demolition, if we were renting the trucks and the drivers, that, that, that would fall within that, that demolition plan item.
I don't have a, I don't have a number before me, I'm just trying to, to make sure that we have this appropriation proper, until we have it done, with all the numbers with us. If, if you can make it not to exceed a hundred thousand, then you know we're gonna make a profit, unless it comes back before the council.
I, I just have.
In other words, you don't overextend the city.
This will be, see, this will be the time that maybe we should have the human resource director here answer some of these questions, because a lot of these questions that we cannot ask Mr. Jones, a lot of these questions are human resource questions, am I correct? Your human resource director will be able to answer some of these questions, and I think that we'll get it to, I don't want to get into day-to-day operations, we've been showing, I think, Ms. Rams, I think we should, we should ask the human resource director, is he not here? We have a human resource director, huh? Oh, so we should have a human resource director here for those things, and I don't want to overstep the human resource.
Once you ask your question, I'll try to answer.
Well, you're not the human resource director, I think that's a question for him.
Supervised.
Oh, well.
Ask me, I'll see it.
Well, well, you, you shouldn't, because that's what you hire, that's what we hire for, so I would like to ask your director, so I would like that him or her be here, so we can ask them, so we can teach us.
I have a practical question, I understand that you all have fought over, did you like the fishing, so, for, for me, a city attorney, I'm just trying to get to the bottom line. Mrs. Jones, how are you trying to do it, and what are you asking this council to do from appropriation standpoint, so we can get it done? Now, in Mrs. Jones's view, and the mayor, the mayor wants a speaker to say, but he wants, we just need something so that Mr. St. Columbia can make his motion.
I want to have make the motion to get the human resource director to help us with it.
You said we already got seventy thousand appropriated, right?
Seventy thousand remaining in the appropriation.
Okay, and we can, we can reset for the drivers, right?
Yes.
And we can do all the thirty for the part-time employees?
Well, again, it depends on, it depends on if the trucks come with the drivers, a lot of times, at least trucks, they send the drivers with the truck. So you pay one amount to the truck driver, uh, and, and, yeah, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but we got somebody here who does that, but, uh, but I, I would say that, if, if, if you make a motion not to exceed a hundred thousand.
Yes, sir.
Additional thirty thousand to seventy thousand already appropriated, then you can guarantee that the city will not, uh, risk anything. And I, I do think it's a unique opportunity, uh, the numbers have been crunched, and will be crunched more by HUD, but have already been crunched quite a bit, um, by HUD. And it's a, it's a win-win, it's a win-win, and that's the reason they're doing it, and offering this to us.
So for clarity, with the mayor and, and, and the public works director asking Mr. St. Columbia and rest of council, just make an appropriation not to see Mr. St. Columbia. Not to, not to see, with the mayor, Mr. Jones asks us not to see the hundred thousand, and for any, and his spending authority to be included in that, so he can not have to come back to the city council for five thousand a year, et cetera. That's what he's asking, yes.
Man, I read that stuff, so moved.
So, it, it, it doesn't matter, Mr. St., Mr. Franklin moved, and Mr. St. Columbia's second, to appropriate specifically. Gentlemen, 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 gentlemen. The gentleman, gentlemen. Everyone, ladies and gentlemen, you're in the midst of a meeting. The motion is by Mr. Franklin, the second by Mr. St. Columbia, to appropriate a amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars to complete the Hennivee West Hennivee House and Thorne demolition project, inclusive of truck rental. And, uh, any part-time employees are necessary, part-time employees are, uh, not to see twenty-eight hours, and not to receive any benefits, uh, from this, from this contract. And, uh, that, that includes it all.
Can I ask to clarify if the hundred thousand dollars, would that include the seventy thousand dollars that's from demolition?
This, this is, yes. No, it's an addition to the seventy thousand dollars, that's what.
Because they, they are, yeah, because they, they are very specific, if you're using the current appropriations or if you're adding.
This is, you ought to have that appropriated, Mr. St. Columbia motion was appropriate additional hundred thousand.
That's what I mean, additional hundred thousand or additional thirty thousand. If there's seventy already remaining, do you want to add an additional thirty, or do you want to add an additional hundred thousand, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, Mr. Franklin, is your motion to, the budget already reflects that was seventy-five thousand appropriated, five thousand of that has been spent for demolition. Mr. Mr. Turner is a- asking, are you appropriating the additional thirty?
Just thirty.
Or appropriating a hundred thousand?
Thirty.
Okay. Is that second reflective that, Mr.?
So I'm, I'm saying, yes, ma'am, but HUD will figure that.
Amanda said something, they got to know about.
Now, he was talking about the auditors. We were talking about the auditors and line item, discussing, I'm sorry, we were saying whether the line item at the end of this was going to reflect, ladies and gentlemen, please, ladies and gentlemen, we were trying to see what line item was, was going to reflect a hundred and seventy thousand or a hundred thousand, that's, that's what we were trying to see. Thank you all, I, I, I'm sorry for, so the motion is for appropriate additional thirty thousand dollars to the line item that already has seventy-five thousand, and it was five thousand of that would have been spent, uh, into the this year's budget, uh, for this project, Hennivee West Hennivee House and Thorne project. It is not to exceed the hundred thousand dollars inclusive of part-time employees, truck, uh, equipment rental, and et cetera. And it obviously may have to go above its five thousand dollar spending limit, uh, spending limit to, uh, to get this accomplished.
An initial agreement, right. Any questions about the motion? Comments, if not called up.
Davis?
Yes.
Ethel Lee?
Yes.
Ford? Crockett? St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Five, yes?
Five.
Six, yes?
Okay, and now you need a motion just to approve the contract. Mr. Franklin, basically, we adopt the contract, second, uh, before you, and the second by Mr. St. Columbia, any questions or comments about the motion, if not called up?
Davis? On the contract, okay, St. Columbia? Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin? Ethel Lee?
Yes.
Ford? Oh, six, yes?
I'm sorry, I thought we were still, so motion passed.
Everything passed, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you very much for your indulgence on that, um, I think that's a very exciting development for the city and, uh, on white, and it's, we're moving forward. I think that's a very positive thing, so thank, thank you all, and I know the city, uh, thanks you as well. All right, the next issue, and Mr. Ken Wallen is here, he's been, uh, very patient, and the, uh, really, it's the next three items on your agenda. It deals with the so-called oak forest repair, uh, so you recall the sewage, just to recap, the sewage, um, drain pipe in, uh, the middle of, uh, oak forest, off near oak forest. Uh, was, uh, broken or ruptured dramatically, um, we've had a few meetings on it, so the ADQ approved a plan submitted by Smith and Wallen, uh, for both a short-term and a long-term, uh, corrective action on our part. To wait further, uh, fines and, and, and disciplinary actions by the state. So the short-term fix, uh, was, was conducted, uh, it is no longer, uh, flowing into the watershed, which, that watershed then goes on, uh, from that oak forest area. To include a great deal of our community, and ends up going through several neighborhoods that may not even be aware of it, because it is a watershed. It also eroded around the pipe, which is what caused the structural failure of the pipe. The structural failure, the part that caused the erosion, a longer-term fix, um, was part two of the plan that Smith and Wallens submitted. And so the three items, and I'll just mention all three of them at once, and then I'll recognize the council for questions, and Mr. Wallen, if he, if he's willing to, uh, to address any of it. The seventeen thousand sixty-four eighty-nine is for the race construction to correct, the short-term correction, that's work that's already been done, that stopped the leak, according to the, the corrective action plan, it was approved by ADQ. Smith and Wild Engineering Services, five thousand five hundred thirteen dollars was for the engineering work, that's already been done on that short-term part of the project, as well as the long-term plan that was submitted to ADQ. That's the second item on your agenda, five thousand five thirteen seventy-five for Smith and Wild Engineering. And then the third item is the corrective action plan of ADQ on sewer biology repair, that's, that's simply the, uh, the longer-term fix, and that's where I'm gonna probably rely on Mr. Wallen a little bit more, uh, as to where we need to go forward on, uh, on that. So, having, having mentioned the three items on your agenda under new business, I think it's like, or old business, I'm, I'm sorry, old business, any, any questions, Mr. Mr. Franklin?
Pay you back.
Mr. Franklin has a motion on, on the floor to pay Smith and Wallen five thousand five hundred thirteen seventy-five for the, uh, and that's order number thirteen, so, right? Mr. St. Columbia seconds the motion, let me get that front this here. Uh, actually, so that needs to be a motion, put it on third file reading.
Yes.
So Mr. Franklin made the, approved it, by order number thirteen twenty-two, uh, third and final reading, signed by Mr. St. Columbia. Any questions or comments about the motion, if not called up?
Davis?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Ethel Lee?
Yes.
Ford? Five, yes?
With the weeds construction, I don't know.
Well, well, we need to.
I know.
Do you want to go ahead with the order?
Yes.
Okay, um, order number thirteen twenty-two, and order is waving competitive bidding in accordance with Arkansas Code of Antisays, fourteen fifty-eight three oh three, authorize the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase certain services for the city of Hennivee West Hennivee credit-related purposes. Is there a motion to adopt order number thirteen? Mr. Franklin made adoption, St. Columbia's second, any questions or comments about the motion, if not called up?
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ethel Lee?
Yes.
Five, yes, one absent.
And emergency clause under order number thirteen twenty-two, uh, declaring emergency, emergency, excuse me, uh, Mr. Franklin, means adoption of emergency clause, which St. Columbia seconds the motion, any questions about the clause, not called up?
Franklin?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Crockett?
Yes.
Ethel Lee?
Yes.
Ford? Five, yes, one abstention.
Okay, I think we dismiss without a motion approved, uh, Mr. Franklin, I think you were.
I guess we could go to the correction, I mean, the corrective action plan to ADQ, or the sewer biology repair, what is the action plan on that, the corrective action plan?
I'm sorry, I didn't get all that.
What, what is the corrective action plan?
Corrective action plan was required of us by ADQ, that is the job, that is what Mr. Wallen did.
Okay.
That aspect of the short-term fix to stop the immediate problem of raw sewage going into the watershed and then a long-term fix to keep it from uh coming back, which uh because it's a short-term fix, they estimate, uh ADQ estimate, we can ask Mr. Wallen. That is, the issues that caused the the rupture are still there. The materials will rupture again, you know, in the in the near future if we don't adopt the long-term fix. And Mr. Wallen, if you want to come out and talk about the plan, you wrote it, uh it was approved, adopted by ADQ. Miss Crockett?
You say the short-term fix, but you know, sometimes short-term fixes last five, ten years. What's the estimated length of? You know, I know you can't put a pencil on it and say, this is guaranteed to last so many years, but you know, I'm just asking.
Excuse you, my first one.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
It could stay, it could stay there for quite a while. Uh that and what what ADQ's concern is because of the urgency of the fix, they could not put a steel pipe across there. We had to use a PDC pipe. So one of the things that ADQ's concerned with, if a tree falls, if a tree falls across that PDC pipe, it would break it.
But it was turned on to last five.
Right, well, and the other thing is, uh and I, in in the corrective action plan suggested if the city had anybody during a heavy rain that could go see, I don't even know really how high the water gets on that on that pipe. But the answer to the question is, I feel very uh good about the fix that we put in there as far as its uh integrity. Uh obviously, it's not going to take a tree fall or if a big log comes down rushing water. I just don't know if the water gets that high and it will ravine. Of course, the other thing that was fixed there was there was a stopped-up minnow even upstream. Pipe had broken. That was cleaned out. Now, that's 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 pretty permanent. One of the things that we noticed is uh, Miss Alexander mostly me a little bit, crawl through those woods out there. That sewer line runs up through there and it crosses that ditch a couple places. And of course, the ditch is doing what our ditches do, it it's slowly lowering, but they call head cutting. It's getting deeper and it's exposed that pipe in some other areas. And so the corrective action plan would be, was also included to look at those to see if maybe something needs to be done to reinforce those. It's not a problem now, um but while you're in there, that'll be the time to do it. The biggest thing that ADQ was really concerned with was the pipe. And so what it really would need would be to encase that plastic pipe and steel pipe or just replace it with a steel pipe. And then put some stone around it to try to keep that ditch from getting deeper. So I I mean, there's a lot of options uh that would be looked at uh on the corrective action plan. But as far as is 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 the immediate danger of failing now, I I would hope not. We should try to do a good job. They did a good job.
Other questions to respond to, anybody?
So you said the seventeen was full work that had already been done? So what about the permanent fix? Oh, so we don't need anything that's done right now? Okay, I just wanted to make sure, okay.
The long-term fix, do we have a budget for that or?
No.
I think. Hey, what about the long-term fix, right?
If you need to do something medium, like a long-term fix.
Well, if the issue with ADQ is that it's it's we have, we do have to implement the long-term fix. And it is coming on us to do so. I mean, what what kind of timeframe would you? Any ideas, Mr. Wallen, on what time, what should we do next on the long term? Well.
One of the things that would have to be looked into is waterway. Uh you know, the city went in on pretty much an emergency basis to get that fix done and I think you you're okay there. But before we go in and start putting riprap and whatnot, we've got to make sure the city's got the waterway to do that. We just can't go marching out on somebody's property and fixing sewer line. Yeah, the way I can maintain your sewer line on that over that sewer line, but if we have to do something else around it and access to it, might need some waterway work. I think the urgency with our with our recall, and I apologize, I would know, I try not to come to the council and do anything, but I was kind of contacted on this one and I, so I'm really not real prepared, but I think what if if I recall, the letter, the fire up letter from ADQ was that everything was okay, but they were primarily concerned about that PDC pipe. But if they did want the corrective action plan executed by the city. So the the only urgency would be to make sure that they know that you are at least taking some positive actions for corrective action plan. If they, they're going to know that, hey, if you're an education engineer, uh as as he started on it, you know, is he running behind or what? You know, that's that's the main thing. What you don't want to do is say you might ruin anything.
What would be the next step you'd recommend to to show ADQ that the city is taking the diligent steps we should be taking on the long-term part of that?
Well, first thing generally we're going to do unless Jeff thinks he can take it on, uh he would need to have tried to, and and particularly if you're going to bid it, uh if if the if the city water department can do the work and you're not going to have to bid it. You don't even necessarily have to have an engineer or may have limited service engineer just to help him determine what he needs to do. If if Jeff doesn't feel like the city has the capacity, and that's a very difficult, I'm I'm sure everyone here knows what we're what we're talking about. That's a difficult spot. It's standing in our veins in the middle of the woods. Uh it it's 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 one that you can really have a difficult time in. So if Jeff doesn't feel like the city can do it, then the city is going to desire to bid that if you're going to publicly bid it, you need to show the plans and specifications that all contractors bid in the same thing and the same, everybody's bidding the same.
Correct. And that would, that would require.
That's going to require an engineer, that's all.
So.
To engage an engineer, just to say, we want to engage an engineer. And then my suggestion, uh like I learned in two years, uh I think what I would probably want to do if I were engaged or any engineer were engaged would be to submit some type of an engineering services agreement to the city attorney, since it is a contract. That city attorney uh review that uh and then submit and then forward that to to the council to know, uh whatever your procedure would be, so that everyone can understand what that engineer services agreement would include. And then that engineer can proceed on with a plan.
Is there any objection to? Is there any objection to asking uh Smith and Wallen to submit a proposal to Mr. Valley? As he was stating there about the long term. I don't think we have to prove anything, we just have to.
I don't have to prove that, but yeah. His thing that I would say, if I may, because when when engineer submitted, this does not have to be bid, it just has to be appropriated. But these are professional services, we're not doing competitive bidding. Uh Mr. Wallens or credentials have been with the city for uh quite some time, twenty-one years. And so it's one of those things that we we look at the the service agreement to tell what the scope of services is and go forward. You need, the city needs the engineer to to do the these services as relates to an ADQ would want to know who is the engineer that you did it with. And um I think that the beginning of the plan, uh the engineer would develop the plan in the process to how to finalize it. So I think that's the the most prudent way to do it and then we can, he can give the meeting, be on the next city council meeting agenda and uh we can approve the scope of contract and the appropriate approximate amount uh that he would think that may cover his engineering services.
So there's no objection if you could get that to Mr. Valley as soon as possible, so we can try and get it on the next agenda as he stated. And and if I, and if uh if I could beg your indulgence for just saying, because of that, Mr. Wallen and and we we will, I promise you, come back to B C three, but if we could skip over that and go to the highway forty-nine bridges issue, would you mind briefing them on that? So that.
Highway forty-nine bridges.
And then we will go back to B C three.
The highway department, sure, Marky, you probably know, the highway department. Which is going to replace, when you turn at the welcome sign going to Mississippi, that first bridge, you run it so rough. Especially coming back into town, if you hit, it just knocks your wheels off. They're going to replace that bridge. They're actually going to move it over and try to get it more in line with the second bridge down there before you go up to the big bridge.
So they're going to put in a new bridge?
Yes, sir.
But it's it's a reason probably why the drainage that runs up under that bridge, you know, is is normally.
But and that and that's what, I think that's what's an issue, uh it's not just wrong.
Right, and you got four log. Right, and it's what it is, is uh the the uh Helen improvement district used to clean out that ditch too. Cause their water flow, the water flows from the hogs all around this way. And you know, there are cross ties in there and the reason why there is backing up, no one is cleaning out those ditches. Uh Helen improvement district used to take care of all that, but it uh it has failed to do so and maintain it. But that's where a lot of problems with everybody do it, because the water stays there and and you go if you go around and look, it goes down on Old Highway, you can see Old Highway is starting collapsing by the gas lines. And you ride back there, you see the water has just started rolling all that back there. Maybe y'all should give it, like, help, I mean, the uh Helen improvement district should be involved in that too to see if they can keep their ditches and stuff that runs through there cleaned out. And that could better help.
Question.
Right.
Yeah. One very large force main and a large force main, you got a very similar large main and another smaller. You got, you got fifteen inch force main, you got eighty force main, the one miles away to the area that plus, I'm saying five. You got ten inch waterline. Wait, that's right, across there, it's a six inch waterline. Running along. Plans, all I know is a couple of ones are going to be in the the new line, like the highway pass. So the highway port is going to require you, the city, to get your line out of the way or determine the direction. Now, another thing that needs to be looked at by whatever engineer you choose to do that, is that will require an engineer up on the shore of the power pole, so. I haven't given up yet, unfortunately. Because your lines are in their water, they're not going to be reversed. The fix may involve relocating some lines as out of the waterway, out of the existing waterway. They might be, you know, that's just something that that wherever you choose to do this, you're going to need to get the power department, city, at least you get some of the personnel. This is not going to be cheap. Fifty-fourth day enforcement, we can't just turn our own. You know, an engineer would get the plans, uh it's going to involve cities, the city's going to need to to go out. I mean, we know about where everything is, you don't have to plan out exactly where it is, an engineer's going to determine if that line, if it can stay there and and the power supports, you know, being planted cannot cannot interfere with it. It's a pretty, pretty involved project and and I think they're chomping at the bit, the city to get going, I think they will be. I think they'll be, I I I know y'all tired of you talking, but they they want the city to engage an engineer to begin the process of determining what lines are going to be in conflict. And then come up with a plan to how to get them out of conflict, whether that means moving over a little bit or what do we have to do around the whole entire site. So that's that's the difficult one, and now you have to go quite wider. You also don't want to get into having environmental issues if we have to move over here to ditch or wherever you have to pull up and things like that. So that's what the highway port right now is really anxious for the city, is to engage an engineer to begin the process of turning, what's in conflict, how it's in conflict, and what's the solution. And then an engineer should also at least try to see if some of it might be reemphasized.
Well, I was about to ask him, uh it requires a second scope of when you and I talked about this a while ago, requires a second scope of service agreement, is that correct?
That's correct, it would be, that would be a separate.
Right. Right, right, you and I, we had an info meeting on sidewalk, we talked about that a while ago. Uh but we just, I just wanted to make that clear for the council that we would need to engage it. And that he's read before, and I think that we uh policy have a second, just on the agenda two weeks from now, so we'd look at it, look at it, potential amount to appropriate. But what's what's it if it's just for your own information, you understand what's going on, to understand, because you need to follow a plan on the other issue relating to uh the scope of engineers' services. The mayor was not here last time, Mr. Wallen was not here on the moving of the bridge. I did tell you all about it, but what you're trying to keep you informed as you go forward, because the project, what they're going to do, bridge and relocating those lines, is going to be quite expensive. And so uh we need to get moving post haste on on that as well.
There, you know, I wouldn't need anything to die. You say, hey, we want to choose you, engage you to begin the process on the first thing, basically, get uh sometime, I got to figure out for a pound, engineer service agreement, I would need that to uh to uh if you then review it, make sure he's gone through it.
So so, you know, we can get ready to start, we hear, let's go ahead and start trying to get the power on, so when it comes to us, we can already be ready. So how it will work is good about, we we are ready to go, we can, our part are ready to go. So I'm, if you if you want to do it, you all get together, let us know, we'll do that. Mr. Wallen, I want to go through the uh, I'm I'm confident we can have some for this council meeting. Because all the way that we use on bridge, uh it's a different format than we usually have.
On with the um the other, the long-term fix.
And and that would be what you're speaking of, no, it's not going to be planned especially, that's just going to really be the engagement. My group, my group and my general idea to talk about, that really is going to be a conflict with that, that's that's going to be awful.
Uh do you think our, our, the part two station is actually supposed to engage an engineer to get started? So I I wouldn't, I don't think we should wait a longer than two weeks. To get you started, they're they're pretty anxious, because like everybody else, they're looking at the dry period of the year to do work. Now, it's probably, tell me if I'm wrong about this, but it's probably a year away from actually being done, am I mistaken? But in order to make the the dry season, to get the work done a year from now, we've got to do the work now. And the first step of that is going to be engaging in an engineer is is my understanding, right?
First, whatever waterway they need to have, they want to hold the utility out of the way, I mean, that's that's the first thing. They don't want the fire to come down the contract to get stopped because you
Right.
You have to come to a stop that just costs.
And 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 to clarify, because of the age of what we're talking about, we're not really sure yet if it's stay right away or. And, and, and to clarify, because of the age of what we're talking about, we're not really sure yet, if it's stay right away, or city right away, or and that's, that's basically what you'll be doing, is, is, is figuring out those legalities from engineering point of view, for the highway department to proceed.
When we didn't see, you know, the city won't have to go. So, we know, a part of it is based on the other plans, but we don't know exactly where these ones are, they don't have to be found, you know, Jeff's gonna have to text, open, young, open out there, so we're gonna have to try to spot so that I can then, you know, I, I saw that take, go out and shoot those crocs, and we were way better with the highway plant. Cause, you know, maybe there's a possibility, but you got a big set of piles here, a big set of piles there, and lines going between them, maybe it doesn't have to be real good. Uh, cause again, it's not just a matter of moving around, it's a matter of what we do while we're moving, right? It just doesn't cost us all.
So, so, Mr. Wallen, I'm sorry, we're keeping it, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to try to get that, you know, Mr. Valley, work out an engagement letter, or engagement agreement of some kind, anyway, for us to discuss in two weeks, uh, with, uh, long term. Before you leave, I, I, I was remiss, I forgot, we did not deal with risk construction, do you wanna address that a lot, the work they've already done on the short term, and, cause they, the council had to approve that as well. Well, that's, well, it's, the, the, the work's already been completed on the fix, the actual, besides the, the engineering supervisory work, we also had actual work, and it included the city, and it also included risk construction, and there and the rest, I think that was the first question, perhaps, or one of the first, was seventeen thousand is for that work, right? No, let me, let me ask and answer that question, that's, is that correct?
That's, that's, no, no. That's what I understand, that, that didn't come through the, the rough contract, said, right, reached, but I think it was seventy, I think it was seventeen thousand. And that's probably fair, they were there for two days, uh, for a, I think, Monday, yeah, he's gonna talk about six, five, one, and a lot of trouble.
But I, it's, you know, it's one of the, somebody else can make the question, I, I just wanna make sure that he did it, you know, that's what it is, they did work, you know, uh, Mr. St. Paul's, who's the, who's the most, who's the most?
Well, I'm sure, I mean, I, we, we, we. Do you invite the best, second?
We, we, I'm not, no.
Second, Clancy May, you said we put once, number six, I think it was.
Six, 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 sir.
Well, it's number twelve, man.
I'm sorry, twelve, I'm sorry, I'm moving it wrong, I'm moving it wrong.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's, it's, yeah. Well, I had to look, change numbers, just number four.
It's my, it's, it's on December twelve. All right, so Mr. St. Clancy May, so we put it on December twelve, which might be in your, uh, your, uh, packet as six?
Yes.
That could be.
Um, but it is actually on December twelve, twenty twenty two, and third and final rating. Is there a second? Oh, well, I haven't seen. Okay, my second, uh, Mr. Wallen? I thought you wanted to be right about. Okay, so the motion to approve, or December twelve, uh, or to put it on third and final rating, one second. We want discussion on risk constru-, on risk, uh, construction, we owe him seventeen thousand dollars for work already done. We were compelled to do it by A D Q, um, to give you some idea, the daily fines for not complying with A D Q can be up to ten thousand dollars a day.
This, this is, this, this is staggering. Brought this up, it's.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we, we need to get this out of the way, folks, uh, we need to be keeping the plan down the road, putting my things off, no, no. Yeah, we, we, we just, to, to close now some of these things.
The other thing I add to that is, is that, um, I did speak with A D Q today at, at length about this, because, in part, not only because, but in part, but because uh, uh, right for us.
Was it, was this part of the bid, did it go to the bid space that, that we had?
Uh, Mr. Wallen, I think, I think we did, do, do we bid this out or not? I, no, we, no, we bid the long term, or we're gonna bid, I can't remember what my saying. I, I can't remember, I'm just gonna ask him, do you mean?
Like, we bet it.
But we were compelled by A D Q to do it, so, you know, state, same federal regulations and laws, you have raw sewage, it's not even treated sewage, it's raw sewage being pumped into the watershed, that was literally going downhill to poor neighborhoods and other neighborhoods throughout the city, and it's a serious violation of both E P A and A D Q laws for clean water, and, uh, because risk construction was able to come in on that basis and get it fixed, we probably saved us a, a lot of money in fines and fees. Having said that, we face the very real prospect, and it's my duty to tell you, because I was asked to tell you by A D Q today, that we, and, and I want Mr. Valley to participate in this as well, because this is, this is a legal issue, or can be, that, that they are, A D Q is pursuing a state consent decree against the city, and what that means is, um, that we're compelled by court order and by consent of state agency to comply with federal and state laws, and if we don't do that, then we go to federal consent decree to E P A, which is incredibly punitive for the city, and not something that we, we wanna entertain. Um, so I would, I would suggest we pay risk construction, we have used risk construction many times, um, and the reason for that is because, uh, frankly, when we, when we call for help, he's one of the only ones that ever shows up, so just, especially during this post pandemic or pandemic period, we had a very difficult time getting contractors. He stopped what he was doing to get us taken care of, it safeguarded our citizens more important than anything else is the danger of raw sewage to contaminating people's homes, properties, it's a serious issue whenever it backs up, whenever, there, there are other issues, smaller issues, it's still serious, but this was literally pumping into the watershed of the city, it doesn't matter that it was in the middle of a, a forest, what matters is that it was in a watershed that went throughout the rest of our city, and risk construction stopped it. Um, I would suggest that we pay them as soon as possible.
You're right, yes, but there, there is a bidding process that has to happen first.
Yes, sir.
Because, yes, we, we have policies who have told me personally, that they could bid this job for a lot cheaper, they would show, they would show to go for a city, but this is the thing, this is new to us. How about bids and the people who are bidding city, or inhaling what's up, the reason why a lot of our jobs are not here, because we don't do business locally, so, no, sir, you have to stay out of it. I would, you could have got Greg's plumbing, you could have got, uh, what, Quaterbell, or what, Sunday, Michael Quaterbell, you could have got them to come out, and just, they gave it, but that's quite, Michael gave an estimate, it was way cheaper to risk. You all chose to go for a city, so, that being said, we didn't follow the bidding process, a lot of stuff that we do, we don't follow bidding process, so when you decide to follow bidding process, you, you give a screech from the mountaintop, it ain't fine until you follow bidding process.
So you go punish the mayor, is that what you're saying?
I ain't punishing nobody.
What are you trying to do? And, and, and it's, 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 it's.
Right, so, like, so, so we didn't, no, let's don't, no, 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 we don't, let's don't.
I don't, just say, this Franklin, this Franklin, please, and this St. Clancy, the, the, please, this, please, this, please suspend your discussion. Um, the, the, if you, if you recall, we had a special call meeting about this issue, we had a lot of options available to us, but then A D Q ruled that out, I had a special call meeting in this room and asked the city council to participate in bidding and all those other things, city council adjourned without action, that is a fact. Then A D Q compelled us by law to act immediately to safeguard our citizens' health and welfare, and that's what we did.
Nah, 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 not.
And, yes, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, and you're out of, you're out of word, that's, that's exactly. Ms. Crockett. Right now, I'm, I am, I am compelled to inform you that
That is not true.
A D Q is in the process of doing a state, A D Q consent decree, because the city doesn't take these things seriously enough, we are endangering the health and welfare of our citizens. These are serious, serious, very serious issues, and, and, and it's endangering our citizens, and it has alarmed A D Q to the point where they are in the process of contacting us, including Mr. Valley, about a state consent decree, that's a very serious matter, and involves a lot of fines, that conclude, it'd come to a whole lot more than seventeen thousand dollars. And it shows a lack of confidence in our ability as a city to govern the water and sewer utility company to the benefit of our citizens, to their public safety, they're required, because regardless of what power the city thinks it has, we do not have more power than the federal or state government, especially when it comes to these issues, and I would advise you strongly, and ask Mr. Valley for his legal opinion, but I would advise you strongly to comply with federal and state law, this was compelled us, we had a special call meeting about this issue, it was deferred. By the, the next meeting, A D Q told us we had to do it, and that's what we did, to, to, to take care of the safety of our citizens, and that's just, it's that simple. Now the mayor wants to be paid for his work, I don't blame him, you like to be paid for your work, anybody in here does not like to be paid for the work. I think it's fair to say, everybody in this room wants to be paid for their work, risk construction did the work, they do a lot of things for our city, they're very reasonable, and when we do bid out, they usually get the bid, because they are more reasonable, and the services you mentioned do not come to the level of expertise A D Q requires for something as serious as this, as a sewer break. And that, those are the facts, and the mayor, you can do what you want, but that, those are the facts.
If I may, that's all I've. Said about all of this, first, a city administrative order is an action by the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality to correct and to remediate issues complaining to the environment, this particular issue would be sewage. Now, the process is what they do, is when they find that there's been some violation, there's violations, they send you a letter, try to get you to comply, and then they try to get an order saying that you're gonna stay within, uh, protect the environment and, and do everything to, uh, to remediate the issue, not have further issue, it depended on how you approach that, uh, it depends on how many fines, et cetera. But going back over the history of it, when we all had a discussion relating to this, uh, there was an impasse between the mayor and the city council, just to refresh everybody's memories. Uh, the city council asked to project be bid out, it was, it was supposed to be bid as a whole, in interim, there was a letter, I informed Mr. Jeff Patterson and the mayor that they had to be to tell A D Q of eating sewage within twenty four hours, they did so, and, and the A D Q sent a letter saying that we need to, to give a plan by X day. Now, the impasse was further developed at that point, because the mayor went ahead and fixed it, and you had a long discussion about, uh, the city council wanted to appropriate, the city council talked to the mayor about why didn't you call a special call meeting before you hired Reese, and we've been at this impasse ever since, uh, as it relates to it. Now, the mayor spent his dollar at five thousand dollars, this was above five thousand dollars, the city council has a right to ratify it. Uh, and a ratified is just saying that you approved it on the back end, but it wasn't done on the front end. The mayor said so many, many times to the city council that he felt he had a duty to do it, so the council has always stated for the fact many times, we had a duty to come to them, and we continue to reach this impasse relating to it. Uh, as it relates to, uh, when Mr. Wallen was speaking earlier, Mr. Wallen, and, uh, when we, we anticipated during the scope of duties and going forward to do a permanent fix as relates to it, Mr. Wallen said for the record that he thinks the temporary fix is sufficient on a temporary basis only, that, that eventually they'll do a permanent fix. A D Q's issue with the city administrative order is if they send it to us, we'd have to respond, and tell them what our plan is and how we're gonna do it, and depending on how well we respond, then that's where the fines come in, et cetera. So violation has already occurred, because the violation happened when this raw sewage was there. Uh, the issue is, is what's the remedy, and are you gonna take the remedy serious? Uh, Reese is not part of the consent administrative order, in that that's not a part of it, and he's done his part. Now, the, the issue is, uh, Reese at this point can, can, can sue the city, because he's saying, I've done the work and I'm waiting to get paid. Uh, it was not done properly according, it was, it was over five thousand dollars, and the mayor did not beat it out. Uh, the other issue could be, eventually, and I keep telling the, the administration, the mayor, city clerk, city treasurer, that the five thousand dollars, if someone sues, and we, cause actually the city position would be, you're liable, not city, and that's city's defense would be. Now, you're, uh, you're all engaging in this conversation over and over and over again, I think we need to have, at this point, was it a pan? Or at some point, he was gonna sue us, and then we'd have to chat this question again, and, but, I'm not saying that what the mayor did was proper, the mayor felt he had, uh, did, did, y'all already had this issue over and over again, that, that he could have called the special call meeting, and you all, uh, approved it over five thousand back then, but the issue been defined, and redefined, and redefined, and redefined, and redefined, and I'm just regurgitating this, because the public, the, the public hadn't been in any one of these meetings, I just want everybody to understand what's at issue, but it's possibly seventeen thousand dollars that was done, it's temporary fix to risk construction. Risk construction has done the work, the mayor authorized it, it was over his five thousand on them, and he's asking y'all to ratify it now, at this point, and that's where we are, the city, city council can either ratify it, or the city council can take no action, if the city council takes no action, I can't anticipate what Mr., cause, what risk construction would do. The mayor saying from a ministerial standpoint, that risk construction probably will stop doing stuff for us, that, that he feels that they've been doing good business for us, and et cetera. So I think that completely restates the issue as relates to it, there's a financial issue that's remained in the city council, as to whether you wanna approve it, and go forward and, and do it. Now, as it relates to considering administrative orders, race, Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality, I believe that we should comply with everything to make sure everything is done, that the permanent fix is done, that the engineer is engaged, that we get everything done and completed in a proper manner. Uh, and I would caution the administration again about the five thousand dollars, that's the mayor, the city clerk, and the city treasurer, by side any checks that's above five thousand dollars, that's not gonna approve by the city council.
On that, is, we did have a special call meeting the same day that, uh, learned about it, we called one the next day or twenty four hours later, and no action was taken. We received a letter, as Mr. Valley correctly stated, that said we had to go ahead and do it, that supersedes local, uh, ordinances about spending limits. It is because of the safety of the people involved, I'm not exactly sure I understand the reluctance to do these things, but, uh, other than try and embarrass me, you're not gonna embarrass me, uh, we did the right thing, we did it as quickly as I became aware of it, and I tried to have a, we did have a special meeting, you didn't approve doing anything, except bidding it out. A D Q said in a letter that wasn't acceptable because of the time involved, and that we had to move forward immediately.
What in the?
That's what the, you all got a.
No, we don't, I don't have a letter that says that.
You got one, Ms. Crockett.
Not that says that they, they did not approve, what we always stated that night was, that since it was in the middle of the woods, it was wet outside, Mr. Patterson stood right there, that you could not even get to the place, all we asked that night was it to be bided out, you sit in your chair and stated that you called A D Q, A D E Q, and asked them, not that they sent you no letter, you called them.
But they did send the letter.
No, you said you called them, now the.
I did both, Ms. Crockett.
But I'm saying, they ain't sending us no letter, saying that they don't, they did not approve us bidding it out, so don't say that, man, don't sit up there and make up those false allegations.
We, we had to immediately remedy the situation, that remedy was provided by risk construction, and Mr. Wallen, whose invoice you just approved, I might add. In order to immediately remedy it, after A D Q sent the letter, which was after I called the special call meeting to, to try and get us to do it properly according to our local uh, spending requirements, but state and federal safety laws on sewage, raw sewage supersedes our local, uh, ordinances, and that's, you know, is made very clear when the safety of our community is at stake, um, I'm not only not embarrassed, I'm proud to say that I acted as diligently and as quickly as I possibly could on behalf of the safety of our community, especially since this was going into a watershed that affects a awful lot of our neighborhoods, and can make them sick, which also exposes us to liability. Um, so, yeah, we did the right thing, our city did its best we could and did the right thing when we could, and I'm proud of that, if you don't wanna pay the man, uh, don't pay. But it's not on me, I'm trying, and my job is to inform you tonight officially, the A D E Q, and you can call them tomorrow if you'd like confirmation, and I'll give you. The A D E Q, and you can call them tomorrow if you'd like confirmation, I'll give you the number, is pursuing a consent decree against the city because we are not complying with state, federal law. And, and this is one of the examples that they're going to provide. Well, so, and that, that'd be my response. Mr. Edley and Mr. Valley, either one.
Misleading statements that were made are too many for me to address. But we met, we took action. The action was, we said bid it out. That was the action, bid it out. The letter did not say bidding it out is not acceptable. That was not in the letter. But more importantly, I keep saying this. If you had the authority then and you believe you did it then, do what you did and finish it off now. You don't need us now. If you didn't need us on that day, you don't need us today. So take care of it. If you think you need our authority today, you needed it then.
Are you asking me to go ahead and pay the bill?
I'm not asking you to do anything. I'm saying do what you believe you had the authority to do. If you thought you had it then, then you have it now.
I had the authority to stop that sewage leak.
Well, then take care of it now. You don't have to, you don't have to sit here and beg us to approve it. You don't have to beg us to do it. If you believe you had the legal authority to do it, okay then.
I'm asking you to do your responsibility and do your job.
No, we're asking you to do your responsibility, which is get approval for your expenses. That's what we continuously ask you to do.
Which was the purpose of the special call meeting?
And we said bid it out.
That's right.
Which is by our, which is by our local, now wait a minute, which is by our local ordinances and state law. We said bid it out. Now, if you believe you had the authority to take the action that you took, then stick with it. Stand by.
So you recommended I go ahead and pay it?
I didn't make a recommendation to you.
What are you saying? What are you saying then?
I said if you believe, then operate on your beliefs. You can ask me what I believe.
Let me say
I said if you
Based on my beliefs, you think I should
On whatever your belief is.
Don't, don't, don't bring it here. Do you think the city clerk and the city treasurer signed the check as well?
I believe that it is illegal exaction for either one of y'all to sign the check. And what I mean by it is that your legal is actually reading when y'all have signed that check.
It's illegal exaction if you one of us
Illegal exaction.
That's your advice?
For you, one of y'all signed it, save sixteen thousand. You don't have the budget approved for to do it. The issue is we keep going back and forth. And while the mayor, the city has a duty to protect the citizens for us, the sewers and the, so the public utility, there's also a constitutional requirement for the city not to engage in deficit spending and for all monies to be approved in a proper manner. The statute fourteen fifty-eight three oh three gives the mayor exclusive right to do contracts, but it can be limited by three oh five, which says the council can limit the mayor's spending authority. The council has had that ordinance on the books since two thousand nine. And it, it limits it to what is five thousand dollars without the city council approval, seventy-five hundred for, for budget purposes. It also addresses serial contracts where it can't be broken, broken down and to be in pieces. And so while A D E Q has, has a right to tell you fix it, they're not going to get into, they're not going to get into your budgetary situation. They want the city council, the mayor to work together. It's a law that applies to the council, mayor to work together. And our caution administration as city council, we keep having these issues. And it's one of those things that, that, that what is obvious is that mayor, you're spending money how you want to, want to spend it on that issue and you want the council cleaning up and that's, and then that I'm going to do. I don't think the Reese is going to be approved tonight. I think it's, it's going for it because it's, this is, this is repetitive. As it relates to it, when Mr. Ethel scan, I can't speak for him. But as it relates to what he was discussing, signing a sixteen thousand dollar check without approval, then either one of the three, we run up. Now, as I, one is playing with illegal exaction. It's, it's, it's from the constitution of the state of Arkansas. And for monies does not, what the constitution says is that a city, a state, a county, any, any entity of, of the state or the city or the county cannot even have evidence of indebtedness without the, without an appropriation. And so the issue further goes to when you apply those expenditures standard, status, is it limits what a mayor can do. I've always said that I disagree with this ordinance, but it's been on the books. I've always said that it limits what the mayors can do, but it's, it's been on the books since two thousand nine. It was there for Mayor Valor, Mayor Willis, Mayor Hollowell, and still here for Mayor Smith. And it, it is restricting. And every, every time I tried to convince the council to, to change it, we have impasses like this. And so it is what it is at this point. I caution all of the administration. Again, if we get sued for it, the city attorney's position is going to be sue, sue you personally because this is a debt that you all created on your own. But that's, I represent everybody and you all in this impasse. I would hope that Mr. Reese would be paid for his work. I do my best work when I get paid. The quote, the late Bobby Martin. And I would hope that he, uh, Mr. Reese of Reese Construction would get paid to do their work. But I, I have no votes. I have, uh, I would hope that the mayor and the city council will work better together on, on these things. And I'm not putting anything on either side. I'm not saying the council is doing anything wrong. I'm not saying I think that you all need to, to have clarity. Mr. Franklin wanted to address all these contracts for a while. I've said to you all, you'll need to have a financial meeting. We're not getting everything done in these meetings because it was two hours and homeless. Ethel is gone. He leaves every meeting at, at eight o'clock because he has to pick up his daughter. But I think you all need to have a financial meeting where you just resolve all these financial issues, go through it. And if we have to meet every week, that's what we're going to have to do. I'm willing to meet as many times with, if, if it take, if it doesn't come conflict with my, my other cities. But we, we got to get it done.
Yes, may I say something? These people have done the work because they were asked to. Maybe the mayor should have done something a little different. You know, that's all a matter of opinion, but the man did the work. We need to pay him. If you put yourself in Mr. Reese's situation, he came out and fixed our problem, solved it. And it was solved and all. Maybe it could have gotten a little cheaper, probably so, maybe. We don't know. But the mayor did in good faith what he thought he was supposed to do. And by state law, he tried to do the best he could for our community. We had raw sewage running down the street and, and any health and safety of its people of this community. The mayor acted in the way he felt to do it the right way. And he did it, got it done. Now the man needs his money. Now, we can go, we can pay him. Go get a lawsuit if this man sues us. Seventeen thousand dollars if we get a lawsuit. We might pay attorneys to take care of it. I think we need to go ahead and pay the seventeen thousand dollars and get it over with. Go forward and move forward from experience and tell the mayor in the future from now on, you do it. We're not going to approve it. So if, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if I may say something.
There's a second issue. Attorney, I haven't seen him similar. I think I got like five lawsuits in the past month. But Attorney, I haven't seen him in a matter regarding Mr. Armando White. And he says he's going to sue us about that if, if, if we don't pay the twenty-nine thousand. The mayor disputes it. That's between the mayor and department head as to who authorized. The mayor said he didn't. The department head says that it was authorized, the Mondo White, the, 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 the doctor. But I received a letter from Attorney, I haven't seen him. I think that we need to get all of these loose ends and so you all have a financial meeting so you could talk about it all at one time. If y'all desire to ratify Reese. Armando White is, he has all the black roll-off carts around the city. Bill was presented to, to the mayor probably, uh, yeah, two or three months, even four or five months ago. The mayor said he did not authorize it. And, uh, but he has been trying to get paid now for six months or so. Problem complex behind, behind, uh, I guess it's unpopular. But the only reason I'm missing that is his fighting convention, right? I think if you all want to ratify issues, just look at all of them and get it all done.
There's not going to be documentation on authorize it because I did not authorize it. And there's no documentation. Going back to the sewage issue in Reese Construction, your advice is to not pay it until the city council approves it. The, I will remind everybody that Mr. Reese stopped raw sewage from being pumped into our community. And I had a special called meeting, which was the appropriate thing to do. And the decision, the decision, even though our recommendation was to, was to move urgently, the decision was to bid it out. A D E Q sent a letter that said it must be addressed immediately in the short term. You can bid it out for the long term, which is what we spoke about earlier in the meeting, engaging Mr. Wallen to do, to bid it out for the long term, and we will. This was a short-term issue that immediately affected the health and welfare and safety of our citizens. And A D E Q sent a letter telling us to address it immediately, urgently, and that's exactly what we did. And I not only did not make any errors, I am very proud that I did act immediately on behalf of the citizens. And it's that simple. So if you don't want to approve it, then don't approve it. I will take the advice of the attorney as far as signing checks, despite what Mr. Edley said. And I won't sign it. But it's an obligation, it's an obligation that was incurred by the city in, in, in an exigent situation. And on behalf of the public safety of our community, I not only don't regret it, I'm proud of it. And I would encourage you to put their public safety first. And, you know, we, we, uh, we owe it and we need to pay it. And he stopped the sewage and we are bidding out the long-term fix as the council wishes. And that's what we already talked about earlier in the meeting. And I, I think Ms. Davis had a question. That's because I don't think anybody's hearing me.
Yeah, we can hear you. Just like you, you were the person that authorized Reese Construction. Who authorized? You said you didn't authorize Mr., what is his name? You didn't authorize him. How is he sitting, how is he coming on to property doing work and you didn't authorize? Well, someone had to, and you are the mayor.
I didn't authorize that amount. I verbally said it's, it's Let me answer your question. I verbally indicated Mr. Jones and probably a text message and Mr. Williams as well, that we should use them, they're a local or reasonably local regional roll-off service. And we can use roll-off services and that would be a good place to use them. What I did not do is authorize over five thousand dollars.
And so
So there is a difference with a distinction.
But it's not, it's not a difference when you are doing things verbally and nothing is in writing. And now you're saying you didn't do it, just like Reese, you didn't do it.
I, I'm not saying, I'm not exactly sure what your question is. I did not authorize anything over five thousand dollars with the company you're talking about. This construction, I authorized that we complied with A D E Q's letter to us to immediately stop it. And to do the plan that we talked about earlier and for which we paid Mr. Wallen recently, just now, or agreed to pay for his work. And we need to pay Mr. Allen for the kind of work he had to do.
So mayor, any
There's a difference between those two contracts.
Let me ask you a question. Even with a, a contract under five thousand dollars, there's nothing in writing? Someday, sometimes it's just verbal. Just go do it.
I, as I said, I indicated, I think, a text message to Mr. Jones that we could and we should use them. And I still think we should use them. But that's not exactly the same. It's like saying, yeah, we need
But it's nothing in writing.
Plumbers, that doesn't mean I've approved over five thousand dollars of experience. I didn't do that, never did do that. And you won't find the evidence otherwise.
And you don't have anything in writing for them either, right?
Nothing over five and I never approved it over five. I never indicated it was okay over five. We actually had a bid on that project about a year earlier with the pandemic sort of interrupted basically. And I want to say the bid on that was roughly around ten thousand dollars. And I think, I think we all thought that was too high. So no, I didn't, I didn't.
So what you're saying, y'all stood there and say y'all had a verbal contract that you
No, we didn't have You just said something I didn't say, Ms. Crock.
You've been saying stuff we said
I didn't say we had a verbal
You said you agreed that these should be used. Okay, okay. What you said, you agreed that they should be used. And the time that you said that you agreed that they should be used, did you say, I agree that they should be used, but amount to your five thousand dollars?
Excuse me?
I know you didn't know.
I didn't understand what you said.
You said you stood and told him in a text message to Mr. Jones or some of them, so White or whoever, that you agreed that we should use the roll-off services because they were local.
I thought we should use their services if we need them, yeah.
Okay.
Same thing.
Okay, did you, did you ever say during that time, did I agree that we should use them only if their services do not go over five thousand dollars?
All I said was Ms. Crock, you want, you want me? All you want to do is fight with me, Ms. Crock. There's nothing to fight about here. Why do you want to fight constantly?
Why do, why
We're supposed to be on the same team, Ms. Crock. And all you want to do is fight. Fight, fight, fight.
Wait, wait, man. I had the floor, so please
And if you want to fight, if you want to fight fair, that's fine.
Okay.
But fighting for the sake of fighting is just hurting our city.
Okay, man, you never let anybody talk. You always interrupt people and then you want to holler. Every time somebody asks you a question, that was a yes or no question. Every time somebody asks you a question that it seems like that you are being pushed up under the truck, you start hollering about somebody trying to fight with you. If I'm fighting with you for asking questions that are legal and that we need clarification on so that we can pay people, no, I'm still talking. I'm still talking. Then, yes, I Well, you let me finish. I am fighting with you. This happens every time you get to talking loud, make the people think that what, because you're talking loud, that you're telling the truth. You can go back to the records right now. And everything that I just told you that you sit here and said that night, that you called A D Q, that we bided it out after we had the special call meeting, you went and called A D Q. You telling the people like they sent you a letter, the people ain't sent you no letter. You ain't gave us no letter. They said they did not accept what we had said. You get on here and you try to make people think because you talk loud that, uh, everything that you're saying is true. Mr. St. Columbia said over there and he just goes along with everything you say. If I was elected, just like you, and I was elected to be a voice for the people, everything that you want to do, you do. Just like you, you, you here now, you, like Mr. uh, Ethel said before he left, you didn't feel that you needed us to approve you hiring Reese Construction. So don't think that you need me to approve you paying them.
Right, so the question you asked was what they would say in law school, I think, Mr. Valley is a, when did you stop beating your wife question? Which means there is no yes or no without, without making a, it's a lose-lose and it's an improper question. Once again, he was never authorized in that case. That answer is never going to change. And there will never be any evidence of that because it never happened. And that is not the same as saying that we should use local services. Mr. Franklin just said that earlier in regards to the Reese contract. That I don't think he obligated us to over five thousand dollars. All he said was we should consider local contractors. That's all I said. So if you think it's wrong when I said and somehow committed us to over five thousand dollars. And I guess Mr. Franklin just committed us to over five thousand. But that's not, that's not at all the case. Now, Mr. Franklin, I'm not, you're not recognized yet. So we will move on. So we can Mr. Franklin. I'm trying to, if you'll stop talking. Now, we want, we, obviously you're not going to approve payment for Reese Construction. And that's fine, but on the record, you need to understand that you're subjecting this city to an incredible amount of liability exposure. You're both interrupting and you're both talking loud. I am compelled and A D E Q informed me to say for the record, to make sure, make sure this is in the minutes so that A D E Q can also watch this on YouTube. Understands that you were willfully deciding not to pay Reese Construction. And they are, I am informing you that we are being placed under, soon to be placed under A D E Q state consent decree because of our lack of cooperation with federal and state clean water laws regarding sewage. And you have been informed and it is on the record. And having said that, now, nicer, we'll move on as Mr. Franklin asked. And it's after eight o'clock and I'm, I'm at your service, but we'll move on to V C, we'll move on to V C three.
I made a motion a moment ago. And, and I wanted to go on the record that I have, I have made the motion
that I have I have made the motion to pay this gentleman seventeen thousand sixty four dollars and eighty nine cents. So he's done the work. Uh he and right or wrong, the city owes him the money. We need to pay it and we need to move on and try to do the right thing for the future and continue on. And keeping this raw sewage out of neighborhoods is not anything to bicker about and argue about. If y'all wanna fight with the mayor, continue your fight with him. I don't but let's get something done with this community and let's quit arguing and fighting. Uh this this council has done nothing for the last few months.
We paid Mr. White and I go along with paying Mr. Reese. Now, you pay Mr. White, it's thirty nine thousand dollars, whatever you want. You make the motion and then I go along paying Mr. Reese.
Right now, this this motion is right now, well, listen, we do one thing at a time. That's what I mean. Y'all wanna try to cover so much trash, let's start cleaning it up one at a time and getting it done. What arguing? I wanted to go on the record that I made the motion and that the rest of you guys refused to pay it. And then and if that has to go to the State Department and go to court, then I want it to be known that I was for paying this gentleman. And that's all I have to say. And you can argue all night long.
Anything you wanna argue about. What A D Q, A D Q's issue is sewage. Sewage is being fixed. We're co-mingling things. We're talking about the authority uh of the water department and 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 making sure that it operates healthy. This A D E Q is not going to sue you or go after you about Reese Construction. They're going about the raw sewage. Let's be clear on that. And that's been fixed. You don't have a solution on that. Now, respect goes goes both ways. And mayor, I was advised before, get the city council approval beforehand as we go forward. Now, that's all I have to say about all that. Go ahead, Mr. Franklin.
We we can move on to V C three. I don't know how much longer we got. But if you would like to go through, it's 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 I'm into your pleasure. And that that's about as long as I can stay too, but I will stay.
Because I would give myself over there. But V C, the V C uh computer service, that that's that's your your serial contract. It's one of something you want to say, say that we told you to be that, that you didn't do. It's one of those. Same one of these issues. This is a serial contract that you engaged in that had Mr. Stuyves, you won't pay V C. That Mr. Mayor has a serial contract that he was studying these folks and he's paying every other month to month. So let's say then, let's say Amanda White, watch this and move it on to the next. Here is, right here, Mr. Mayor, people you have paid. Serial contract, twelve thousand dollars to to uh the name is company is uh Calvin Gray. They twelve thousand dollars. Freight plant, eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Billy Williams, twenty one thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Rio Robinson, twenty thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. We got this council approval being bid out. Uh court, uh car court, uh ten thousand, seventy five dollars. Mid South Escalator, twelve thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. Global Tech, the mayor had did not bid this out, twelve thousand, twenty four thousand, seventeen cents. Gerdell Jones, forty eight thousand, six hundred and thirty two thousand, fifty cents. They had not, this body has not approved his contract and over and over. So this is like, I think it's really troubling me when these have been paid. This is almost a hundred, but these right here, West Coast Concrete, uh Anthony, uh Larry Dill. He went over and spending it, Robert Bailey, uh somebody out of Marvel, Bones. It went on his business altogether. Then with this dirty stuff comes up to a hundred and seventy nine thousand, six hundred and fifty nine dollars, sixty seven cents. They were not approved by this body and checks still got signed. So Mr. Valley, does it? We we have two ordinance that you don't even follow. So with nobody not picking with you, you just killed your own self by V C three, Armando White. This other guy on here, Reese Construction, he did this, but you paid these other folks and then come out because there are serial contracts that you have created. So I'm not lying on you. If I am, this is what you paid. Your name is on these checks. So this is my how to try to, whatever. I'm not, I mean, so
They aren't. They aren't contracts at all.
But you have used, Mr. Mayor, and that's what we asked to beat it out. You have paid a hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars to stop the women bidding out. That's what you you this is what gets me. Let me say this before I go. This is what gets me about this administration here. You all say that you're for the, you you wanna see the city do well, you put the city treasure in in jeopardy. You put the clerk in jeopardy because you get these contracts, you pay these folks and they come signing because, hey, they did work. Well, what makes these people better than V C three, Armando White and Reese Construction? I just don't understand how you break the law. It's not right. I there's no explanation. You're supposed to beat it out. Over seven thousand, over five thousand dollars. You're supposed to beat that, but you start making a serial contract. This is this is your, Mr. Mayor, there is no explanation to this, man. It 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 ain't no reason. You speak for three or four minutes and we sit here and be quiet and repeat the same. This is true. City treasure. City treasure, Gary Turner. What these deals paid, with the numbers I just gave you out, how do you all pay these?
I'm not sure about the amount, but we 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 have paid off.
There are receipts, this way, these receipts, these checks that you all have signed, these invoices. All these invoices are accurate. Am I not correct? So this this was this did it out through this body. This this body be in it. The mayor had picked these people time after time, month after month. A hundred and seventy thousand dollars, taxpayers' dollars. And I'm not sitting here, but it bothered me when you sit here and act like we just slow and crazy, but you didn't sit there. This is money that has been spent that you have paid, yes or no?
Yes.
It's not for the public here, yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. These are the invoices that are serial contract that this body has not approved, yes or no?
Uh we paid them.
His his question, his question.
Thank you. I rest my case. Leave the jury.
We have adjourned the meetings.
I got kids at home. He talk all night.
Alright, so to clarify the record, Mr. Valley, I got a couple of questions for you that are legal. Are all expenditures by the city contracts? Are all expenditures from the city?
Engaging contract to pay someone to do do work services, all that, those are contracts.
So every penny that we pay from the city is considered a contract? That's your answer?
What I'm, yes, it was an employment contract or was it a contract for services? It's a contract.
Yes.
So so do all expenditures that exceed five thousand dollars, are they automatically considered contracts that exceed my spending authority? Just because the total amount might be over five thousand for a variety of different projects. You can't just combine them all and add and say, oh, it's exceeded my authority. Is it properly appropriated? Mr. Tre- Mr. Trezor, are all these expenditures properly appropriated?
To answer your question before you go, Mr. Trezor, the purpose of the serial contract ordinance, if, for instance, if there was, Mr. Franklin brought up trees a couple of minutes ago. And if the city is going to contract to do trees, the city should do a bid and get a contract to do the trees. The city going contract to do concrete, the city should do a bid and contract to do concrete. If the city gonna do computers, the city can do a bid and get a get a contract. There's a benefit in doing it as a whole versus piecemeal, and that was the purpose of the serial contract relating to it. That's that's what it was.
Are we audited by legislative audit? Do they come in and review our expenditure? Yes or no? I'm not being argumentative. I just wanted to answer the question.
I did.
Alright, thank you. And is your testimony that every
I'm not testifying, but
It is alright, get going. Is it your answer that every expenditure exceeds my spending authority because you can add them all up in an annual
No, no, no. The the ordinance in the two thousand nine uh says that the mayor's spending authority is five thousand dollars. Uh it has to be previously appropriated. And uh if it exceeds seventy five hundred, it has to be bid. But it goes further and says that it cannot be broken down into a series of contracts. And it defined it as a serial contract. And a serial contract is if you take, for instance, you wanna cut trees and you divide it up into a series of four thousand, four thousand, four thousand, four thousand, that would be a serial contract. If you're gonna do computers, you'd be divided into four thousand dollars each, but that would be a serial contract. You're looking at the overall expenditure for for the year. If you're going to uh prepare roads, uh for instance, the gentleman that's been sitting back there for a while that just left out the room, he has all the contracts to do all the bridges in the state because he received it as a whole. And so this the city's interest is to bid it all as a whole, so you receive the benefit, the cost benefit of one contract to doing it, we're getting a better price, people getting a best price because they would do it all and do it all in one exception aside. The state has cut out things for us to vehicles because they have already done the bidding for us. They cut out things for us to gas, because gas is impractical, et cetera. Now, I've always argued to every city council that I think it's impractical for it to be as low as five thousand dollars. I've said that and it's it's going up ten thousand. It started at ten, it started at twenty, and it's going up, I believe, thirty thousand now.
We have many problems in our city. We spend most of our time talking about the five thousand dollar limit in serial contracts. I just thank you for your time answering. We've lost a quorum. I wanna make one thing clear. Go to the public. We've been audited three times, not one time that I've been mayor, not one time that they accused me or found any evidence of any kind of serial contract or any other evidence that I have misspent money. As a matter of fact, for the first time in many, many years, we are finally mending our city financially and are getting slowly back on track for our audits. And our state audits us, not a private auditor, and they come in, their job is come in and tell the public how we're spending money and whether we're in compliance with the law or not. And I'm pretty proud that we have increasingly gotten better audits since I've been mayor, and I'm proud of it. So the accusations made by Ms. Franklin are completely unfounded. Thank you very much. There's no quorum. Meeting adjourned.